I call to order the October 20th, 2020, meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick, Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weis.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I see, please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move to the public portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to the commission. The consent agenda today consists of a prior approval of prior minutes, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of counts payable and payroll, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. Does anyone wish to amend or add to or take away from this? All right, hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. We will move to action items. Item number one.
Proclamation declaring October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month with Abby Hunter, victim advocate at D-VAC.
Good morning, Abby.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Okay. Domestic Violence Awareness Month Proclamation, October 2020. Whereas domestic violence is a widespread, preventable, public health problem impacting all demographics of Kansans, including Celine County, and whereas relationships are often counted as life's greatest treasures, and tragically, many are tarnished by one person's feeling of entitlement to power and control over the other, resulting in violence and fear, and whereas domestic violence abusers violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity with their intentional systematic use of financial, psychological, sexual, and physical coercive control and abuse, and whereas the U.S. Department of Justice reports domestic violence homicides comprise 14% of all homicides in the U.S. and that women are more than twice as likely as men to be killed by an intimate partner, the Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports 37 domestic violence homicides were 25.3% of all homicides in Kansas in 2018, and whereas in Kansas in 2018, a domestic violence abuser murdered another person every nine days, a domestic violence abuser committed a violent act reported to law enforcement every 21 minutes, and law enforcement made an arrest due to domestic violence every 43 minutes, and whereas in the last year, D-VAC served 678 victims within our 10 counties, 435 of which were from Celine County, and yet these numbers do not accurately reflect the total number of domestic violence victims, as many were unable to access D-VAC during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic due to increased isolation, and whereas we, as the governing body of Celine County, recognize this violence as inconsistent with Celine County values and cannot be ignored, excused, or tolerated, and whereas in declaring this month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we encourage all citizens to know the facts about domestic violence, to familiarize themselves with resources, to recognize subtle signs of control tactics, to act as safe support systems, to speak up against perpetrators of violence and any messages that inadvertently condone domestic violence, to get involved, to teach others and prepare future generations for healthy relationships, and to donate time or resources to their local domestic violence agency. Now, therefore, we, the Celine County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Okay, thank you. In this wacky world we're in right now, do you have any plans for any other action?
Yeah, we do. So, we, you know, we would typically like to do live events and awareness events, things like that, but we've scaled back on those. However, to accommodate for that, I have been going on Facebook, which I'm sure we all love to be on Facebook, so if you have a Facebook account, go follow the Domestic Violence, or, I'm sorry, yes, Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas, our Facebook page, and every Wednesday, over the lunch hour, 12 to 1, I have been going online and doing a presentation, an educational presentation about domestic violence. There's three more, because there's two Wednesdays, and then Friday, the 30th, I will also be going over the lunch hour. And then we've also got, at Kansas Wesleyan, there's a yoga event that we're doing at 8:00 p.m., and social distancing, masks required, all that to keep everybody safe.
Okay, sounds like you're going to be busy.
A little bit.
Are there any comments from commissioners? If not, I would like to have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we declare October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we declare October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion does carry. We will get you a signed proclamation as soon as we can, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll move to item number two.
RFA 233-20, the Cafeteria Plan Agreement and Documents with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, commissioners. Celine County does provide a cafeteria benefit plan that permits employees to have certain expenses deducted from their paycheck on a pre-tax basis. That includes insurance premiums on reimbursed medical expenses, independent care expenses. There are four documents that are attached to this request for action. The first would be the Celine County Cafeteria Plan Document. WageWorks is our existing plan administrator, and so the change that we made to our plan this year was to have any individual that has less than $100 in their account and they do not enroll the following year, they will forfeit those dollars. What we were finding over the last several years is there would be participants that would have a very, very low amount, there were some that was less than a dollar in that account, and we pay administrative fee for that employee, and so we were paying out more in the administrative fees than what was sitting right there. So, we did recommend the change to the plan. Also included is the Cafeteria Plan Summary Plan Description. There's no signature that's needed on this document. This will be provided to employees if you adopt the plan as it sits. There's an adoption, adopting agreement that indicates that we do agree to those changes that would be effective October 1 of 2020. And then the last piece of the request for action is a supplemental participation agreement. This would allow the Celine County City Building Authority to participate in our plan as a subgroup. The building authority met earlier, and they did approve to come on our plan as a subgroup. That does just save some staff time. Their cafeteria benefit plan was a little bit more paper intensive, and so that would just bring them on as a subgroup under our plan, and it would be administered by WageWorks just like ours. So, alternatives for action would be adopt the agreements or do not adopt them, recommend adopting the agreements, and no additional budgetary impact.
All right, are there any questions or comments from commissioners? An RFA is involved, are there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature of the document as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 233-20 Cafeteria Plan Agreement and Documents. Further comments? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries, 4-0. We'll move to item number three.
RFA 234-20 HCC Stop Loss Renewal, again with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
And good morning again, Marilyn.
Morning again. We do have an attached HCC Stop Loss Coverage Renewal. The previous renewal praise, approved proposal was approved, so this is now the official document that we are accepting that previous approval proposal. This is for a plan year that began October 1 through September 30, '21, so the request is to either approve that or reject the renewal. The recommendation is to approve the renewal. There's no additional impact. Our premiums for this current plan year for our health, dental, and prescription coverage resulted in no premium change for the employees and the employer shares.
Okay, and once again, are there comments from commissioners? Comments from the public? I assume we will take your recommendation here, but I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the renewal as presented by staff.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 234-20 HCC Stop Last, Stop Loss Renewal. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, the motion does carry. We'll move to item number four.
RFA 235-20 Digital Recording System with Todd Heidsmann, District Court Administrator.
Good morning, Todd.
Good morning, Commissioner Vidrickson, other commissioners, good morning. Here for you, or before you today for the District Court requesting to purchase five new digital recording systems for the five courtrooms upstairs. Our current systems that we have are nearing 10 years of age, needing an upgrade. We did receive two quotes, this is a product that there's, there's not an abundance of providers out there. The Voice Products has recently purchased Carmichael Business Systems. Voice Products had what they call the Vic product. Carmichael Business had the FTR, which stands for For the Record. So now, Voice Products is now the provider for both the FTR machines and the Vic machines. The two quotes that we got from them for the FTR Touch was $27,235, and for the Voice Product Vic product, it was $28,860. The courts right now currently use the FTR product, they are familiar with it. It is the cheaper bid that came in. As far as the court staff, that's what they would be recommending is to accept the FTR. And as far as a budget impact, this would fall under the COVID Relief Fund budget where that's what it would be paid out of, and the district court had been approved for $74,140 to be spent by the end of this year. So, we're asking that this $27,235 be coming out of that budget.
Okay, the, and this is the COVID money that the federal government gave to the state, and the state gave Celine County $11 million, that's where this money's coming from?
That is correct.
And I totally agree with that. In a normal, let's just back up a second, if we didn't have this COVID Relief Fund, Celine County would be the ones that would be paying the $27,235. You might just briefly tell us why it's only Celine County that would have to pay for it, not the city or district courts or whatever, you know, wherever it goes, so just tell us that process real quickly.
Absolutely. For District Court, we are, the employees for District Court are considered state employees. However, back in 1977, they had what they call the unified, they unified the court system. Before 1997, or 1977, used to be each court was county-related, county-funded. When they moved to the unified courts, what the state did, the state took all the employees, they're paying the employees, their benefits and everything, however, the agreement was is that the counties would be responsible for the providing office space and operating equipment, computers, desks, housing. So, that's why the county would be responsible for the operating expense of the district court.
Okay, I think that's important for everyone to understand why the county and the county alone is responsible for the district court requirements and so forth. Okay, any questions or comments from commissioners?
No, one question, Todd, looking at these two bids, it looks like the V-I-Q lists a lot more equipment, is it just inclusive in the other bid?
The reason it shows a little bit more on there is because we currently have the FTR product, that's what we're using right now, so a lot of stuff we have already that can already be used.
So, and that's already 10 years old? A lot of that products that you've already using are already 10 years old? So, is this here?
They're nearing 10 years.
Okay, so the FTR is pretty much just a software upgrade?
That's correct.
And the other one is complete, all-new hardware, everything?
That's it.
Wow. Okay, any further comments, questions? Are there any comments from the public? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchase of five digital recording systems for the courtrooms as presented by staff.
Second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 235-20 Digital Recording System for the courtrooms. Is there further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries, 4-0. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your explanations, too. We'll move to item number five.
RFA 236-20 Reflections Food Service Agreement with Rosie Walter, Department of Senior Services Director.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning. Senior Services is requesting commission approval to sign a agreement for food services with Reflections Retirement Resort, which was previously McCall Manor. Reflections is undergoing some renovations right now, and eventually they will have their own kitchen, so the food service need will be dramatically reduced. The term of the agreement will start from one year, starting October 2020 to September 2021, and will automatically renew unless written, written letter of termination is presented by either party. County Council Mike Montoya has looked over and approved. The alternatives are approve the agreement as presented, approve with changes or deny requests, and the staff recommendation is to approve the agreement as presented by staff. The budget impact is the additional costs will be paid from the contractual food line item within the 2020 approved budget. All revenues will be deposited into the general fund.
So, we are going to, this is the former McCall Manor?
Yes.
And we're going to provide meals?
Yes.
Three meals a day for each?
Well, it's not really three, three meals a day. They did look at our frozen meals, breakfast, a cinnamon rolls, when they order them, but it's not consistent. Lunch is very consistent, they call or they have their order done within two weeks prior so we know what to order. They're ordering probably 40 to 50 different meals, so Monday through Friday. And then they have tried out our frozen, but that definitely won't be consistent for
It seems pretty cheap. I hope, I assume that we're at least breaking even, assume that we're breaking even on this, or?
Last time we did a cost analysis, I mean, we charged $5, but the average meal, I believe, was like $4.68. Actual cost.
Say that again, you're charging $5?
We charge $5 for every meal, Monday through Friday, the hot meals that they get, which is what we charge the general public. For frozen, it's $3.25, and for a cinnamon roll, it's $1. I attached all that on the back of it.
Comments or questions?
A question, the frozen dinners are at a cost of $3.25.
They are, but all, but also you don't get the, like, the bread, I mean, unless they ordered it, and of course, that'd be for additional cost, so it's truly just a frozen meal, like a TV dinner. There's no milk, and there's no bread with it.
What is the difference, why does this need a contract when, when they could, when they could just Meals on Wheels this?
Well, it's, it's, they have their staff that come over, and we have a contract with Sunflower that does exactly the same thing. So, they come over, they pick up all the food, and then they take it back.
On, on Sunflower, are those individually packaged, though?
No, we're doing it family-style, just like we do for Sunflower.
And will McCall be family-style?
It is, it is.
So, there's a little less handling of the?
Yeah, yeah, if you had to do every meal in, like, a clam shell, it really would be hard to, harder to keep warm, too.
So, you're treating this pretty much like Sunflower?
Exactly, like Sunflower.
Well, I'm happy that we can, we can help out. I'm a little concerned that, that when we're dealing with a for-profit company, that we're doing something for them with taxpayer resources and taxpayer money that, that is so, to me it looks very inexpensive. I would sure hope that we're at least covering our expenses on this, and, you know, our depreciation on our equipment that's being used for, what is it, a year?
No, it's probably just going to be for a couple months until they get their kitchen done, and then it will just be as needed.
It says October 2020 to September 21.
I put it for a year, but it's not necessarily going to be for a year, it's as soon as they get their kitchen done.
Anybody else have any comments about that? Is there any public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature Reflections Retirement Resort Food Service Agreement as presented by staff.
Second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve 236-20 Reflections Food Service Agreement. Further comments, I guess I would ask the administration, administrator, have you weighed in on this, looked at it and checked it out?
Yes, absolutely, so, and again, this is one of those things that has, is similar to Sunflower Adult Daycare Services. We have had several conversations, Reflections actually asked for quite a bit more initially, and we discussed that in great length and realized that that was not, that was not something we were interested in from a cost-benefit analysis. As Rosie stated, this is only intended to be for a few months, so we have also talked to management at Reflections and provided them with appropriate other resources as well, as soon as their kitchen is complete or other food services to look into.
Well, to me, the difference between this and Sunflower Adult Services is they're, they're a community for not, not-for-profit, and, and this Reflections Retirement Resort is a for-profit company. I think we really need to be careful when we start using, using county services and county equipment to provide something for, a for-profit company. I think, I think we're treading on thin ice here, so.
Quick question, Rosie, if you don't mind. This cost is incurred by the resident?
Yes, they, they do bill their residents for this food.
Okay.
I have no idea what that is.
And you don't know what they're charging?
I don't know, I don't know.
Well, I would assume, Jim, in a senior situation like this, they have a set monthly fee or weekly fee or whatever, I don't think that the meals necessarily figure into that. They, they, you know, it's going to be $3,000 a month, and for whatever the number is, that's my, I'm assumption, I don't know that.
I think that's typical.
But this is just a stopgap until they're up and running?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I'm listening for a motion, or I guess we have one. We have a motion and a second for RFA 236-20 Reflections Food Service Agreement. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and I am opposed, so motion passes, 3 to 1. Item number six.
RFA 240-20 Bid Award for an SUV with Rosie Walter, Department of Senior Services Director.
All right, good morning again, Rosie.
Good morning. Senior Services requesting a commission approval to accept the low bid for a midsize SUV from Long MacArthur for $28,675.30. We, two bids were received, one from Long MacArthur and one from Holm for $28,965. The one from Holm was a GMC Arcadia, Long MacArthur was a Ford Explorer, they're both 2021s. The alternatives for action are accept staff request to approve the low bid from Long MacArthur of $28,675.30 for a 2021 Ford Explorer. Second is accept a higher bid of $28,965 from Holm for the GMC Arcadia or deny their request. The staff recommendation is accept staff request to approve the low bid from Long MacArthur. Seniors are the most vulnerable population to the coronavirus, and they have to rely on others such as us to ensure that they stay safely in their home. We're able to do this by having dry commodities and Meals on Wheels so that we can deliver food right to them. The budget impact, this vehicle is being purchased as part of the county's Coronavirus Relief Fund Direct Aid Plan that was submitted for Senior Services. All costs associated with fuel, maintenance, insurance, et cetera, will be covered with the department's regular operating budget.
The vehicle be used by staff to deliver dry food commodities, do we not, do we deliver dry food commodities right now?
We've had some, you know, huge fundraisers in the last year because of the coronavirus, so yes, we have delivered a ton of food. Usually I do get help from, like, the sheriff's office and, you know, different KU med students, just different people that help me deliver that food, but we have not had a vehicle of our own, and we do deliver as needed quite a bit of that food.
Phil, if we, the, the budget impact here, and the money's coming from, again, from the coronavirus, if we were, and I'm just hypothetically, if the commission says, we don't want to buy this vehicle, and we turn that down, then that money would go back to the state, is that how that would work?
We certainly hope not. What we, we would do is try and find a different expense to spend it on and keep the money locally, but if we are not able to spend our full $11 million by December, then, then it would go back to the state.
Okay, so, I, I'm following, we didn't specifically tell the state, we're going to buy a new vehicle, and that's $28,000 or whatever?
This was included within our budget that was submitted to the state, and they have reviewed. I believe it was allocated at $25,000 in the budget, bids came in a little bit higher than that, but, you know, this was one of the things that the state reviewed on our plan. The state has given counties pretty wide discretion to make amendments to the plan. They simply request that we do a change memo each month when we do our monthly reporting.
Well, from my, from my viewpoint, if this were not the coronavirus money, I, you would be meeting some pretty strong resistance from me, both in the fact that we need a new vehicle that never leaves town, I mean, I would have thought we could have used something different than a, than a midsize SUV, and certainly of lesser value, but being as we are using that money, and I think we do need to take advantage of those situations, and if we don't, someone else will, type thing, so that's, I'll, I'll stop my resistance at that stage, so. Further comments from commissioners?
If this was a replacement vehicle, I'd have no problem, but you've been getting by without it, and all of a sudden, we've got this pot of gold out there, and I'm having a difficult time justifying.
Staff use their?
Can you help me out?
Yeah, I think that every, beyond just this coronavirus, it will, it's going to help with the Meals on Wheels. Staff, on average, deliver at least one route every single day, just because a volunteer is not able to get out that day and deliver for whatever reason, but, yeah, I mean, this vehicle will be used by staff who currently use their own vehicles, so I think it'd be, it'll be a huge benefit for staff.
Okay, thank you for your explanation.
How is that compensated?
How is that compensated?
Well, you know, if someone takes their own car and uses, uses it for county business, I would assume that the county or the, or the senior services would compensate them with mileage, or do we do that or not do that?
There is a county policy that staff can request compensation for mileage on their vehicle. Typically, I say that they don't, but there is a policy, and they are aware of it, that they can.
Is there any public comment regarding this? Bring it back to the commission for action. We're not?
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Long MacArthur in the amount of $28,675.30 for a 2021 Ford Explorer.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, RFA 240-20 Bid Award for SUV. Further comments, and I will say that I'm going to vote for this with a great deal of reluctance, and if it weren't for the coronavirus money that's available to us, that I do believe that we need to take advantage of, and perhaps we do need this at the, over at the Senior Services, but I would probably be putting up some pretty good resistance if it weren't for the funding that's available from the state and federal government, so. At this time, I will ask for all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. We'll move to item number seven.
RFA 238-20 Indigent Services for Tuberculosis Control Program with Laura Lee Tibbetts with the Health Department.
Good morning, Laura Lee.
Good morning. Nice to be here. I don't get to see your lovely faces very often. I'm here for Mr. Tiller. This RFA is for the TB program. We've had this program for many years. Basically, it provides services for people who are indigent, needing of indigenous care with related to TB. It is for evaluation and treatment for those people who are needing TB care. It is, includes x-rays, lab tests, nursing care, and assessments. So, again, this is, this is not a new program. We've done this for many years.
Okay, are there questions or comments from Commissioners? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring them back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the KDHE Contract for TB Indigent Services as presented by staff.
Second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 238-20 Indigent Services for Tuberculosis Control Program. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eight.
Thank you, Laura.
Resolution 20-2297 Review of Section 6 Mask Mandate with Laura Lee Tibbetts. Are you doing that one?
And, good morning again, Laura Lee.
Well, good morning. I, I think this may have to do with the presentation with regard to the COVID situation right now. I didn't realize it was that, was what it was called, but I was going to update you on the numbers with regard to what's happening currently with COVID compared to what was happening last week. Let's see. So, currently, we've had an increase of 744,295 cases in the U.S., and then, and this is just within the past week, and we've also had an increase of 9,953 deaths. So, it's not, not looking good. In Kansas alone, the increase with regard to COVID cases has gone up 10,250. The hospitalizations have increased by 985. The statewide deaths have increased, oh my gosh, by...
That's 166.
166. And the negative tests, Phil, can you read that one as well?
47,028.
We've actually had an increase of 141 cases in the last week, and we've also had an increase of two deaths in the last week. So, that's a very sad situation. As you can see, the trend continues to increase with regard to Celine County and a number of cases. Our nurses are working fast and furious trying to contact people with regard to their situation. The Halloween guidelines, apparently Jason had mentioned this in prior updates, but most of it is just a request to be very safe with regard to whatever you choose to do. Most of the recommendations are saying, please do not go out and trick or treat, do not take your children trick or treating, but if you feel that you must, there are guidelines with regard to how to do that safely. Basically, just be safe and use safe practices to have a fun Halloween and prevent the spread. There is a link there if you want to go in and look at the actual CDC guidelines with regard to Halloween. So, this is nothing new. Basically, wear masks, be safe, and the simple measures are, that show that they work, are to wear a mask, to wash your hands, to social distance, and stay at home when you're sick. And that's why I'm here today, because Mr. Tiller is taking his own recommendations with regard to staying home because he is not feeling well today. So, that's the end of the presentation. I wish I was a little more prepared for you, but I think you all have heard this presentation a few times.
Well, I mean, it's, it's the same song, the same dance, the same verse that we've been hearing for months now. We, as individual citizens, need to take a lot more responsibility on this ourselves. I noticed on the news last night that Kansas is one of the few states that's had a plateau of it, but yet Celine County continues to, to rise. And there is, if you drive around town on the weekends and things and look at the ball games and all the activities are going on, it's not surprising that it's not even a little higher. So, I just urge everyone to, to practice the safety measures that are in place, washing hands, stay at home, wear masks, et cetera. And I am one that is certainly in favor of the mask mandate. It's not that difficult. You know, we've, we can sit here in these meetings for a couple of hours, and you just get used to it. You just got to do it, so. Anyone else used to comment? If not, I think that with no action, that we will, that will make the resolution mask mandate continue. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, that's the path that I think, by consensus, that this Commission wishes to go down, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Nice to see you all.
All righty, thanks. We will move to item number nine.
RFA 237-20 Physical Year 21 JAG Grant Assurances with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning, Annie.
Good morning. This is the JAG Grant, Justice Assistance Grant, that Community Corrections has applied for, for many years. This currently funds a Drug Court ISO, Brandon Thompson, and about $10,000 worth of services in substance abuse and mental health crisis interventions. So, to avoid Drug Court and other clients that have crisis interventions, which happen very frequently, and they end up in the hospital emergency room, which costs all of us taxpayers dollars, the services are provided through this grant opportunity in addition. You approved the application and submitted of the grant. I've talked about the grant recently. We also received a federal audit and did very well on it, thanks to the staff. And so, those federal audits are difficult and time-consuming, and so I thank the staff and Sherry Kraus, who puts up with a lot of extra work. So, the grant assurances are requirements by the federal government that says you will comply with all these guidelines. I don't know if you've even looked at them, but they are very lengthy. And every year, the federal government changes the requirements. And I learned that the hard way, thinking that they were the same several years ago, and found out that we were negligent in one of our assurances. Quickly corrected it and moved on, but I would never make that mistake again. The requirement in this grant is not only pages and pages of grant assurances that we have to study and review, but also Sherry participates in a webinar that is a couple hours long. And I made a copy of the webinar slides, and I'm going to leave those with Phil. It's interesting that even though we get the grant every year, the federal government ups the expectation. So, I just want you to be aware that we don't take our programs and our grants lightly. So, the grant was fully funded at our request, $91,461. And again, it pays salary and benefits for one county employee going to Drug Court, the ISO, and about $10,000 for services to avoid and reduce crisis interventions. We're asking the Commission today to approve the assurances and sign and initial every line that is listed there. And you'll see them as, if you're going through those and reading them and doing those, you'll notice that they're there. And those are, Hannah has them or Linda has the original. There is no budget impact to the county at all. One thing I want to remind you about us, as Todd stood up and explained court services and how that works, state, they're state employees, and they're funded with salary and benefits from the state. Community Corrections are county employees, and over 90% of our funding comes from grants that I write on an annual basis. So, it's an interesting twist that Community Corrections, although county employees, over 90% of our funds has to come from other resources outside of the county, state, federal, foundations, you name it, it happens. As a part of this grant, but beyond, Michelle Callum, who is here at the ISO III, carries a phone 24/7. In addition to that, I give my personal cell phone out 24/7, and is called for crisis interventions. If they show up at the hospital, or PD, or anything else, we're expected to respond. And we do. We're like Cagney and Lacey, are more superhero than that. And we go out evenings, weekends, you name it. We're at hotels, we're at hospitals, we're wherever we have to be to impact justice reform, which is what we're trying to do. So, we're asking you to approve it. You can deny the assurances. Denying the assurances will take $91,000 away from Drug Court and from our program. I will have to find something else to supplement those services, and believe me, Michelle and I and others will work for it. So, we're asking you to not deny it and to please carefully go through the assurances, sign and initial where it's accepted or expected, and approve it so we can get these sent into the federal government. Any questions of me?
Questions from Commissioners? Any public comment?
Well, if there's no specific questions, can I just say a couple other things? I encourage all of you, if you haven't attended our Drug Court, to please come and view a Drug Court. Couple of you have, I've seen you there. But now it's virtually done, so it doesn't, it's not as impactful. But if you don't come and view a Drug Court where you are paying for a portion of that, and you don't understand the kind of clientele we serve and the services that we do, you're missing out on a whole picture of justice reform. And you're missing out on the positives that happen on the outside of the community. So, I really, really encourage all of you to at least, once we are done virtual, because virtual court doesn't work, in my opinion, to encourage you to come and attend some Drug Court opportunities. It's every Monday, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, you could pop in and watch 20 minutes. I'd be delighted with that, so. And I'm including Phil over there, too, so hope that we can get over the virus and have him there. So, that would be it for me.
Done? All right, we're going to ask for a motion for, to approve the JAG Award.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the FY 21 JAG Award for FY 2021.
Second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 237-20 for the year 21, JAG Grant Assurances. Any further comments? If not, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. All right, thank you, Annie. Item number 10.
Amendment Number 1 to Resolution 20-2308 Appointment of Members to the Public Building Commission with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. So, as part of our financing for our radio system, your Commission did approve the creation of a Public Building Commission, and two weeks ago today, you appointed three members to that Commission. There were a couple of blanks left on that resolution, and so we now have names to fill in. Commissioner Shadwick has stated that he would like to appoint Doug Alt to fill a position, and Commissioner White has stated that he would like to appoint Bruce Wyatt to fill a position. And I'll give you some more updates on the PBC's meeting in my Administrator Report later, but would ask you to approve the First Amendment to the resolution, including those names, and be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Commissioners? So, we are appointing, Commissioner Shadwick has nominated Doug Alt, is that what you said? And Commissioner White has nominated Mr. Bruce Wyatt.
Correct.
And so, at this point, I would take a motion to act on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Amendment Number 1 to Resolution 20-2308.
Second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Amendment Number 1 to Resolution 20-2308 Appointment of Members to the Public Building Commission. Further comments? If not, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We will move to item number 11.
RFA 239-20 GovBuild Service Agreement with Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, Commissioners. This request for action is to authorize the Celine County Planning and Zoning and Environmental Services Department to enter into a service agreement with GovBuild to implement a permitting and licensing platform for the department. This particular platform creates a custom portal for all of the licensing requests for services, septic inspections, well inspections, water tests, real estate transactions, et cetera, to basically move to a web-based system where those requests can be made. Our citizens would be able, and the users would be able to track their progress of their permit, and our field staff would be necessary, would be able to access all the necessary information about a property and the project that is occurring out in the field. Our environmental health staff does cover inspections and installations in four counties, Celine County, Ellsworth, Lincoln, and Ottawa County, and currently utilize paper forms for all of the different tasks that they perform, as well as a homemade access database for all records and permits and inspections. Obviously, this particular method is extremely time-consuming, is definitely not user-friendly, and was very much exposed during the stay-at-home order when staff was still required to be out completing work in the field, but our limited citizen interaction due to the stay-at-home became a little bit more difficult to complete that paperwork in a timely manner. We did start looking into different online companies. We took demonstrations from two different ones, as well as, they provided quotes for both of us. GovBuild provided a quote for $10,000 and said that they could have the initial implementation of the project done in 60 days. And OpenGov was another company, and they quoted $40,260 and would take 12 months for that implementation. So, through our different meetings with staff, we did choose GovBuild not only for the lowest cost, but because it does create so much more flexibility for us and our staff being able to create our own online forms after this initial setup and rapid implementation. So, this particular platform, while online, certainly does create for an increased ability for our staff to, to take care of those necessary tasks in the field in a much more efficient and streamlined manner, definitely reduce the need for paper forms, and create user-friendly portals for citizens to request those actions and those services without having to come into our office, as well as our staff being able to create those forms and obtain those forms and information out in the field. This does also allow for appropriate expansion of online forms and permitting in the future beyond this initial, to create and look at beyond environmental health, what can this platform do for planning and zoning as well, for building permits and such. And then, as well as the GIS integration that can, that is a part of this, as well as migration of all of our historical data. So, the alternatives that you have... So the alternatives that you have in front of you for action today is to authorize the chairman to sign the master services agreement with GovBuild for the implementation of this permitting and licensing platform, or not to sign it. We recommend the chairman sign the master services agreement so we can start the implementation process of this platform to be used not only in the environmental health portion of the department, but also planning and zoning. The county did receive and requested $10,000 through the coronavirus relief funds to implement this project before the end of 2020, so we could increase the department's teleworking capabilities. And then the additional yearly maintenance costs and service costs of $2,750 would come from the Technology Improvement Department funds in 2021 for future years.
Will, signing on with these people and taking their help, I mean, does that cut back on our staff at all?
It's not necessarily going to cut back on our staff. What it's going to do is very much streamline processes. We have two sanitarians that are out in the field. And as I had stated, they work in four counties. So a lot of the times what happens is they go out to a certain inspection or permit request out in a different county, then have to track all of that paperwork back here to the office so we can process it and then finish the permit and take it back out to the location as to where the work is happening. What this does is create it all online. So that communication can certainly happen between the field staff and the administrative staff in the office, which helps cut down on mileage expenses that we pay our employees, as well as just streamlining the processing for the end user as well, for the citizen that's actually requesting or getting those inspections or those permits.
This won't change policies or anything like that? I mean, I'm sure you've heard the same complaints that I hear from people, that Saline County's policies regarding, you know, the septic inspections and so forth is very rigid and cumbersome and doesn't need to be have all those steps involved in it. And I think even, even our inspectors have acknowledged that to some degree, but they still have to go by our guidelines. I'm just wondering if somewhere along the line that we can't take another look at some of that stuff somewhere down the line and streamline some of that requests that are made?
Absolutely. This is one step. Again, one of the biggest complaints that we hear from the citizens that we serve is sometimes how long some of this takes. And a lot of it has to do with the paperwork that's associated with it. This certainly helps, number one, start streamlining that process so it is all online. So our field staff can access what it is that they need out in the field and not necessarily have to come back to the office. The other half of this is review of code. And that's something that's going to be a lot more in-depth. But this is, this is certainly just one step of many to help with trying to iron out some of those findings.
Good. I know that one of the biggest complaints is that having to dig up an entire septic system when somebody has proof, written proof, that this is what's under the ground, and this is what was laid in here so many years ago, and so on and so forth, and they still have to dig it up just to show them, see, I told you there, it's there, okay. You know, that's, that's the big thing that I hear, so.
Yeah, so one of the steps on here is, in Phase 4, is basically data conversion or migration. And what that is doing is taking all of our old historical documents and migrating it into the new system, fully while knowing that that's going to be a much bigger process than what we have to accomplish by the end of 2020 to be able to utilize the CRF funds for. So GovBuild recognized that and decided, well, we need to get you, we need to get a good chunk of your historical data migrated first. And then in following years, with your service agreement, we can work on that final data migration.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Yes, I do just quickly here. Once we move to this, if we do move to this situation here electronically, does that inhibit somebody that does not have a computer system that they can call in and say, hey, here's what I want to do? Can you still do the manual?
Absolutely. So what would happen is if we do not, if we have a citizen that is, does not want to utilize the computerized system, our administrative staff will still be able to input that into the computerized system. So again, the biggest part is that it just starts streamlining and prompting that process to move forward any time a citizen requests some service.
Okay, thank you.
A question. I know we're, we have an agreement with Ellsworth County. Did you say there were four counties?
Correct. So, well, Saline County, Ellsworth, Lincoln, and Ottawa.
Okay. And for our services that we give to, or provide to those other counties, is that a flat fee for whether it be a septic inspection or whether it be a well inspection? Is there just a flat fee for that?
That is correct. So not only do those counties pay us to be a part, for us to have those employees that service their counties, but then also any fees for wells or septics, all of those fees come back to Saline County as well. But you are correct, they are our flat fees.
And you mentioned, I believe that there is an ongoing $2,750 projected cost annually for this program. I kind of listened to the other commissioners. The COVID monies that are coming in are allowing different departments to get a lot of bells and whistles and things like that. But when that money's gone, it's going to be back on us to keep this going forward and such. So we got to be cognizant to the fact that there are going to be some budget impacts coming down the road after COVID is gone.
That is correct.
But you mentioned that there, this could have some cost savings involved with it.
Absolutely. So this is what I will tell you, too. Actually, we had already submitted a project for the 2021 budget year to implement this same type of concept. So the fact that we have now, and if I remember correctly, in the 2021 budget, we actually budgeted $13,000. So with the opportunity of the COVID, the CRF monies to come, and for us to implement it now, certainly helps us in future years, in 2021 and 2022, to utilize some of those budgeted funds that we had already tried to budget for, to implement something like this. So we have been very cognizant in that aspect, but you are absolutely correct that there is going to be future maintenance costs that are associated with this particular program. But I do anticipate a very, a really good chunk of being able to have some cost savings, especially when it comes to mileage and other forms and paperwork that would be eliminated with implementing this.
One of our employees resides in Ellsworth County, or in the past. Is that still the case? And that person had to physically bring these forms in. This will allow them to do all that just from an off-site, a remote site? Thank you.
Okay, any other?
Are there any many companies that perform this service? I mean, it seems.
There are. When we got to looking at it, it was, there, and every single one of them is different. And again, we, we, we looked at several different companies, and there were a couple of them that we told them what it is that we wanted to do, and they just flat out told us, well, there's no way that we can do it for less than $200,000. And I thought, well, that's, that's not going to work. But we, we have done quite a bit of homework in this. Again, this is something that we've been wanting to implement for quite a few years. This particular company, GovBuild, is actually based out of Manhattan, Kansas. So they are very much close by if something would happen to come up. Some of the other companies that we looked at, too, didn't have as much customization as what GovBuild does, especially for us to take what we initially billed and add on to it in the future for what benefits Saline County.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further comments? Is there any public comment? I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the service agreement as presented.
Second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 239-20 GovBuild Service Agreement. Further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. And we will move now into some informational items. Item number 1.
Pretrial Stats Update with Andrew Pellet, Pretrial Program Coordinator.
Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to give an update on our pretrial program from the months of July through September of this year. There were 56 placements on pretrial services in the months of July through September. As of September 30th, 126 clients are actively being supervised, 14 are in custody, 254 have had their charges dismissed or have been sentenced on their cases, and 140 have had their pretrial bond revoked. There have been 534 placements on pretrial supervision through September 30th, impacting Saline County Jail by 53,185 days. In the fiscal year of 2020, the pretrial program saved the county an average of 3,568.5 days a month. Now, there are the caveats I have to mention each time. Defendants have the opportunity of posting their original bond. But pretrial supervision does, it goes in and does a risk assessment and then gives the information to the judge. And that can help the judge with modifying the bond and giving them a better opportunity to make that bond. But there are, again, I have to mention that caveat, that they can post the original bond. But our, our program does help that. Our pretrial program has been adjusting to the continued evolution of responses to the COVID-19 pandemic and how it affects our clients. Pretrial ISOs follow up with clients on court dates and times if their appearance is in person or by video. If by Blue Jeans video, we make sure clients have the information they need to appear. On several occasions, we have allowed clients to use Community Corrections laptops at our office to appear in court by video if they have no other means. Again, it's very important with our program that they appear in court and that we use every opportunity. There's clients who, if they can't make it up to the courthouse or they don't have internet connectivity on their phone, they're told to first try their attorney's office. But if they can't make it up to their attorney's office, we at Pretrial say, come up to our office because we want you to make sure you appear in court. We hook them up with a laptop, and they're appearing in court from our office, just as another way that we can just make, ensure their appearance. We are moving into doing some of our pretrial intakes. If we don't have an opportunity to do it in person, we're setting it up to where ISO Garcia or I will do the intake by video and then have them electronically sign documents and get them back to us, the ones that we need to put in their file or file with the court. Item 5 on mine is the Pilot Program. Pretrial, along with Drug Court and Juvenile Services, are a part of a pilot program with UpTrust. It's a platform to communicate with our clients by text, email messages, and send out automated reminders related to court dates and times, office appointments, and other pertinent information needed for effective supervision. Community Corrections began this project over a year ago with the goal of developing a software program to better communicate with our clients and with community partners. After several meetings and a lot of work put in, we went online with the program last week. And so far, we have positive results and comments from clients. This tool should help decrease failure to appear in court rates in our program and address any client barriers before they potentially miss court. And personally, with me using the UpTrust, I have had a lot of great responses. It's just another avenue to get clients' information on court, or for them to communicate with us to address barriers or any other information. For whatever reason, our clients sometimes don't like to call us, they'd rather just text us, and that allows them to use their phones. It comes to the UpTrust program, we see it, we can address concerns or any other issues before court, before it becomes an issue. And again, the most important part of that for pretrial is that we send the automated messages with court reminders. It will get it, you know, 10 days in advance, seven days in advance, a day in advance. I mean, they'll get inundated with reminders. And so far, I've had a lot of positive response from clients that say they like that idea because it's in their phone. In case they lose a card, they have it right there and then and there. Now, over the next several months, being a pilot program, we're going to track data to see, you know, the effects on the fail-to-appear rates and things like that. But I think this is, we've been talking about it for a while, and we've finally got it online, and this is a step in the right direction. Pretrial continues to help clients address any underlying issues or concerns by making appropriate community referrals for resources, and also helping cover some costs so they can receive the support they need. Over the course of the last several months, we continue to make several referrals for drug and alcohol services, whether that's an evaluation, any kind of treatment level, inpatient, outpatient, Community Corrections. You know, we'll help them with that if they're in need of those services. Mental health services, housing, transportation. We just had a mental health liaison from St. John's Hospital Health Center, Chris Smol, started at our office several weeks ago. It's kind of connects our clients and our office with mental health services, which makes it more of an efficient way to respond to those situations. We can get with Chris with a client needs, you know, scheduled for an intake at mental health or maybe what the progress is. Another thing that Community Corrections has started, which is a cost-saving measure, is we've started a GPS SCRAM capability over at Community Corrections. We usually, if that's ordered as a condition of pretrial or an ISO wants to put that as a condition of supervision, we go through other entities, B&amp;K Bondings, what we originally went with, and they would charge us $10 a month per client, $10 a week?
Per day.
Per day, that's right. Excuse me, it's $10 per day per client. And so now with the Community Corrections being able to do it ourselves, we have the units in our office, we were all trained on putting on the GPS monitoring units or the SCRAM, which also monitors alcohol use. And we can do that at the office at a cost of $5 or $6 a day compared to the $10 that B&amp;K Bonding charges. So again, just kind of off the talks I've given in the past, we're just, you know, dynamic in our responses at Community Corrections. We try to search out every response to underlying issues and then making things more effective and efficient, especially as the pretrial program moves forward and we move through this pilot program. And so, and that's all I got.
Okay. I have a question for you. In your graph, on your jail day reduction by month, you know, it goes July and August and September. Would you possibly relate some of that to the fact that, you know, the COVID and the courts are not in session, or has, or at least greatly declined on what they're doing? Would that, would that be related to that in some degree?
I would, I would correlate that with that. We've seen a slight reduction in the jail bookings for those being accused of new crimes. That has been down, which is why you see a little bit of the dip in the jail days, say, by month. But we are, you know, we're, we're keeping pretrial clients on a little longer than normal. So we're able to provide those services longer only because the Kansas Supreme Court is still, from my understanding, reviewing Saline County District Courts on their plan to start scheduling trials. And so, you know, in the past, when trials can be set and cases could potentially be resolved, you know, that happens at varying stages. But now, we still can't even set trials. So we're kind of having this backlog of cases that need to be set for trials once that gets approved. So we're keeping clients on longer. So I know that was kind of a long answer to that, but yes, I do see the correlation a little bit just in the, probably related to COVID-19 pandemic. But there is a decrease in the amount of new arrests, which is.
I assumed as much, but I wanted to hear it from the horse's mouth, so to speak, you know, so. Any other comments from commissioners or questions?
Andy, I just, the funding that you get for handling all of this that you was getting with being, being our, whoever it was, is that, is that from grants? Or how do you get the funding to provide those services?
Well, I'm just going to go ahead and just go like this.
I agree, because I like to step in and talk about that. The county, Saline County, funds to staff. All the services, or I would have to look at that budget for sure. But maybe you, county may pay for some services, but a majority of the services come from Community Corrections grants. So we allocate the funds for a majority of the services because we know without services, they'll end up right back. So the Saline County has been gracious and afforded salary and benefits for Andrew and Marilyn Garcia. And that's how those, that's how that's paid for. But all the services come from Community Corrections.
Thank you.
While we're up here, I won't let them leave, because you opened the door for me. I'm going to leave an executive summary of pretrial Justice Task Force report that the state of Kansas has done. I'll leave a copy, and I hope you take that opportunity just to review it if you have a chance. One of the things the state of Kansas started in November of 18 was a Justice Reform Act. And if you watch the news and get past the political stuff going on, everybody across the nation is doing justice reform. It's not good enough to lock people down and release them because 98% of clients come out of jails or prisons not impacted. And so they're the same people they were when they came in. And so pretrial is a tool, just as all the other services, you know, Community Corrections does or other programs in the community do. These are all tools. Nothing is fast or quick with an offender population. Nothing is fast or quick with an offender population. They don't look like us, they don't think like us, they weren't given the opportunities like we did when they were younger. And it's generational, so it's systemic generation, poverty, criminal activity, all those things come from the population that we see on a regular basis and the population pretrial's addressing. I think that when we talk about pretrial and other services, Drug Court, they think that, people think that, oh, good, they're getting services that we won't see them again. Not true. We know that's not true. Mentally ill clients and substance-addicted clients aren't, aren't easily fixed, and if we don't take all the tools and address the clients, we're not going to have a healthy community and we're not going to reduce what's going on. We've got to look at things differently. We're seeing disconnects and things that were originally set up, and Community Corrections is stepping in now to take the lead on things. Our mentally ill client population has just soared. I had a mentally ill client come to our door, not even on supervision with us, but he remembered when he was a trustee, when he was working in our office, he remembered Community Corrections helped people. He's homeless, mentally ill, no medication, nothing, came to our doors and asked for me and said, I remembered that you guys helped people. And that's, in my opinion, gracious and lovely, and the fact that he didn't want to end up arrested again, and he didn't want to be a burden to the community. So we dug down, found the funds, and housed him, gave him food, and continue to monitor him even though he's not on our supervision. And so those kind of things, we have some disconnects in the community, but tools like pretrial, Drug Court, and intensive supervision and all the things we do inside the building, which again, I would encourage any of you to come and visit, anything we do in our office or participate with the work that Andrew does or Drug Court does or Michelle does or cognitive-based programming, those are all tools that have to continue across the nation. Everybody's doing justice reform, and if we ignore those things and instead go back to the old practices, we will never have a healthy and safe community. I'm going to leave this for you also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any, we appreciate your comments, Andrew. Thank you for bringing us up to, up to date here.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
So thank you. We'll move to item number two.
This is the Quarterly 2020 Budget Update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Phil?
Good morning again. This year, the County Commission has asked me to review our departmental budget performance each quarter, so this is for the first nine months of the current calendar year. And I will say there are no surprises. This budget is tracking largely as one would assume. Interest income is failing to meet the budgeted expectations, which were set during a time of a little higher interest rates. So we all know what's gone on with interest rates in response to the pandemic, so that's not a shocker. Our rentals and reimbursements that we have in places like the Expo Center and the Senior Center, those are down compared to past years. Again, as one would expect, fewer people out renting spaces during a pandemic. Tax receipts are on track. We had our best month ever for sales tax receipts in the month of August. And expenditures are also tracking at very good levels. They are slightly behind last year's pace in our funds except for Roden Bridge. Roden Bridge, most of that is associated with them getting more routine work done this year as compared to last year when they were dealing with a lot of flooding issues, and their fund remains below 75% expended through the first three quarters. So no concerns with any of that. The only department that's on track to exceed its budget for the year, again, not surprising, is elections, and that of course has to do with them trying to adapt to voting patterns during this pandemic. I will note, however, that they've also brought in a couple of new grants on the revenue side that they would not normally have been expecting. So again, no, no particular concerns there. So overall, this report paints a pretty healthy picture of the county budget. Of course, continue to encourage all of our departments to remain vigilant as we head through the last quarter of the year, but commend them for the work that they've done for the first three quarters and be happy to answer any questions.
Well, it sounds pretty good to me. I mean, I like the fact that, you know, that there's no surprises. That's, I mean, we obviously would like to have our, our income a little higher in terms of the, the, from the, our money in the bank and that type of thing, but there's no surprises, so that's the good surprise, that's the good news, in my opinion. So any other Commissioners have questions or comments?
Good job.
If not, we'll move on to item number three then.
County Administrator's update.
Well, here I am again. So just two things that I wanted to update Commissioners on. The first is update on our coronavirus relief fund. Last week, we got out $512,245.50 to outside agencies, $17,662.88 to the county, and $7,690.99 to Community Corrections. Today, we will be transmitting $681,496.99 to outside agencies and $2,649 to the county. I should note that as, of that amount that's going to outside agencies, $522,500 is going to the Salina Area Chamber Foundation for the Small Business Grant Program. This is the first payment that's being made toward that program. Our monthly report was approved by the state and we had a discussion with them. I was on the phone with them yesterday morning to go over that. We are now one-third of the way through our payment cycle for the, the coronavirus relief funds. We are at just a little less than one-third spent. We are about 31% spent, one-third of the way through our cycle. So I've started reaching out to the agencies, particularly those agencies that have not yet submitted anything to us. I sent them a note yesterday, and then the larger agencies that have, have spent something but not a whole lot, I reached out to them as well. I had a really nice conversation yesterday with Eric Brown with the Chamber Foundation. $522,000 is a wonderful start for their program, but we allocated almost 2.7 million to that program, and so great to get half a million dollars out in the community, but there's significantly more funding that we would like to get to small businesses in this community. So Eric is going to start working on some tweaks to their program, probably at some point bring an amended program back to the County Commission so that we can try and get even more of those small businesses to qualify for those.
So, so what does that need? I mean, in terms of a kickstart, that 500, there's people that are out there that can still apply for money. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Absolutely. We, we would encourage businesses to go on to the Chamber Foundation website. It's salinakansas.org/grants.html. It's also linked from the county's website, selene.org, and they're, you know, encourage folks to look at the criteria. It's a pretty simple application and, and to get, get their application in for that funding. We really, we know that obviously businesses were impacted by the pandemic, particularly earlier in this year, and that's the, the whole point of getting that money out into the community to try and address some of those losses. That's what it was there for, right? So we're going to try and do some specific outreach. Eric is going to try and do some specific outreach to particular business segments, particularly the hospitality folks that might have been particularly impacted. Also thinks that, you know, maybe some changes to the program, reducing the, the level of the requirements a little bit. They got, I believe he said, seven applications that didn't quite meet the threshold for revenue loss, and so if we bring that down a little bit, we could get some more money out of the community. But as I said, he'll, he'll work through those tweaks with his board and then we'll bring something back in front of this commission.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, then there, there's still roughly $2.2 million out there that's available to private business?
Correct.
And?
And again, not, those do not have to be chamber members. It's any business within Slayne County. They don't have to be in the city of Salina. It could be New Cambria, Brookville, rural areas.
And those guidelines are found on the website or on this?
They are found on the, the Chamber's website, yes.
Well, $2.2 million, nothing to be sneezed at, so there's, there's money available out there to those, those entities that, that qualify, so.
Right. So we want to encourage folks to, to please take a look at that.
On that same line, Phil, how often does the CRF committee meet?
The CRF committee, the advisory committee is meeting on sort of an ad hoc basis, and so our next meeting will be next Wednesday, the 28th. They felt like they didn't really have a lot to do right now as we were just shoving money out the door, so they waited. What they would like to do is sort of review where we are and whether we need to make tweaks to get the money out by December 30th, so.
Very good. Thank you.
And then the other thing that I wanted to update the Commission on, as I foreshadowed earlier, was an update on the Public Building Commission. So the Public Building Commission did have their first meeting on October 13th. At that time, they elected their officers and they also issued the notice of intent to issue bonds, and so that is being published twice as being required by state law, and so we will get back together again as soon as that publication deadline has run and keep that process moving. That's all I had for this morning, unless there are any other questions.
All right. Thank you very much. And item number four is the Commissioner comments. Any Commissioners have anything?
No.
Item five is announcements, and I don't want to steal any thunder from Jamie, but advanced voting is available upstairs right now, and pretty brisk action, Jamie.
Yeah, it started yesterday, so we're doing Monday through Friday from eight to five. We are also voting early on October 31st from nine to four, and then it will end November 2nd at noon in our office. Yesterday, we had 554 people come in and vote early, so that was great. And we also have received almost a fourth of what we have mailed out back from the advance by mail ballot, so it's been pretty exciting so far, so.
Wow. And I noticed that you've got some temporary help up there that are, that are also in the places, is pretty active right now, so.
Yes, it is, very much so. So they've been wonderful to, to make sure that we got all of our mail ballots out on time. They help with every aspect of checking people in, taking people into vote, so they've really helped us out a lot. It takes a team to make this happen, so I appreciate their help, so.
Very good. We'll move on then to study session, item number one.
So we are actually not going to talk about the study session today. We're going to defer that to a future meeting. The, all of the program partners were not able to be here today like we originally anticipated, so we will bring that back at later time.
Okay. So it looks like we're ready for an executive session?
Yes, I'd request an executive session under the Personnel Exception to the Open Meetings Act for 10 minutes to discuss a department head evaluation.
Okay. And do I hear a motion from someone to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I move we are resistant to executive session under the non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for 10 minutes and revine at 10:35.
Second motion.
Then moving to the second, that we move into executive session for the Kansas Open Meetings Act for 10 minutes. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're in executive session. Okay, it is 10:35, and I, we are back into normal, regular session from the executive session. I will announce that there was no action taken, and at this time, unless someone else has something else, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.